Let's see, that would be eleven oh six, no?
Yeah. Thanks for taking the minutes, Jeff.
No problem. One thing just to start, since I'm an associate member, I think, John, you need to activate me as a member for this meeting.
Okay.
And for these two cases.
Okay.
So you actually have to do that, and I have to write it in the minutes that you did it.
All right. I propose that we activate Jeff as he's an alternate member to be a sitting member for both the case at seventeen Leverett Road and the second case.
Six forty Wendell.
Yeah, six forty Wendell Road, Russ Greco. That's just something that we're here to talk about today. But the case that we're here to take a vote on is the site plan review of the accessory apartment at seventeen Leverett Road. Zinnia Stetson is here representing the owners. She is the contractor for that project. If we have any questions. We all had a chance to walk through the property, John and I, one day, and Jeff couldn't make it that day, went on his own. I didn't have any problem with what I saw there. It looks like it totally conforms to zoning from what I can see from their site plans. It conforms to the setbacks. I did query the other boards in town. The select board responded that they had no comment and no objection. Concom had already seen this project. The Board of Health had questions about the septic design, whether it would accommodate the number of bedrooms, and they went and searched through their records and found that indeed it would. So they signed off. The fire chief had no plans of the smoke detectors and that those plans were provided. And he got back to me that he was happy with that. I don't think that there are any objections from any of the other boards then. John and I didn't see any objections when we were at the site. Do we want to discuss this any further? Or should we put it to a vote?
Well, yes, we do. So has there been an application filed? I'm looking through these materials. I don't see our site plan review application. And along with the application, there needs to be a fee. Has that?
That's all happened, yes.
That exists someplace, okay.
Yep.
Okay, and usually before we vote on the site plan review, we we ask the applicant to just briefly present their project.
Okay.
And then we also have a couple of other things to think about because the state recently changed the zoning act relative to accessory apartments. So those changes will affect our local bylaw in a hundred and eighty days from when they were enacted last month.
That's February second, I think.
Yeah, somewhere in a hundred and eighty days from then, we have to all comply with what the state has done. So we should have some discussion about that.
Yeah, that I thought we might, well, as part of this, because it won't affect this application.
Well, it, no, our bylaw remains in effect until that hundred and eighty days has passed, and then the state law supersedes it. Our, the state law allows up to nine hundred square feet of living area in an accessory apartment. Our bylaw limits it to eight hundred. I don't, I don't know if they meet the eight hundred or not.
Yeah, it's under eight hundred.
Okay, so so that really doesn't matter. If they wanted to expand the thing in the future up to nine hundred, they'd be able to propose that.
They also provided a notarized letter stating that they are the primary occupants of the property, and you know, that goes away with the state, the new state bylaw as well. But for the time being, that's one of our requirements.
Right, for the time being, yep. So I would just, I'd give the applicant just an opportunity to make a very brief presentation before we vote.
That sounds great. Are you able to do that, Zinnia?
If she unmutes, maybe she could.
Sure. I'm Zinnia Stetson, and I proposing to build an accessory apartment inside an addition at seventeen Leverett Road in Chutesbury. I'm not really sure what else you need. I believe everything that you might need to know is already in the plans that I provided a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one question. It was a little confusing from one of these drawings. How much frontage does that entire lot have now? It looks like it's made up of two lots. And added together, that's the lot we're talking about. How much frontage is there?
I don't know offhand what the frontage is.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm looking at this diagram right here, and it's difficult to tell from this whether there is two hundred and nine feet of frontage or two hundred and eighty-four.
It's two hundred and eighty-four because they own both those lots.
Okay, that's what I thought. So good, you're all set with frontage.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, that makes the lot conforming because it's got more than ninety thousand square feet, and it's got more than two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. So it's a conforming lot. So we don't have to get into those issues that we always get into at the lake. This is not the case here. So that's good.
Great. Any other questions?
I just had a comment on one of the pages in here. It talks about the front setback. And it appears as though the area under consideration that's being worked on actually meets the front setback. Was that y'all's conclusion? Because front setback in the town center is twenty feet. And it appears that the plane of the house where the work is being done is actually more than twenty feet back from the road right away. Is that the applicant's understanding too?
Yes, we have not changed the setback in the front.
Okay.
Remember, there was a garage there previously, and they held that setback line.
Yeah, so this just extends that previous line of the front beside.
To the east, yep.
Yeah.
Great, anything else? John, you all set?
I'm good, yeah, especially having been there and seen it and talked with folks on site.
Shall we put it to a vote?
Yeah, I move that we approve this site plan review application at seventeen Leverett Road, Chutesbury, for applicant Zinnia Stetson.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Jeff Lacy, aye.
John Restock, aye.
John Thompson, aye. Carries unanimously. I think the final step here, Jeff, is that I write a letter to the building commissioner alerting him to our meeting and our result.
Okay. What normally happens at this point after the vote is that that I write this up because we have a site plan review decision form. And it gives us the ability to condition it as well. So the way it was approved, we didn't discuss conditions. I think we got a little ahead of ourselves. We didn't discuss conditions, but I don't think there really need to be conditions on here, as long as they just build it as proposed.
Right, I didn't have any.
But I need to write, unless somebody else wants to get into the permit writing, I need to write this up. And chair needs to sign it. And there's actually, there's an appeal period of twenty days, so.
Is there on a site plan review as well?
Yeah, I just sent you guys this form here.
Yeah.
This is the checklist of what has to happen
Okay.
to get this thing through.
All right.
So I need to I need to make sure all these things have been done, and I need to render this into a written decision.
Okay. I think that the project is still moving forward. Am I correct about that, Zinnia? Did you get your stop work order released?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, there's no particular pressure here, Jeff, to get this thing written up. We're not holding up the project.
All right, well, then I won't rush to get it done before Labor Day.
Good.
But it'll be done soon. And you know, this is the cap of, in the file, the last thing that usually appears in the file is the finished permit on the top. And that says we're done.
All right.
But once I get that done, and John, you sign it, I need to deposit it with the town clerk, and it has to sit there for twenty days.
Right, she's got to get around that in case there's any appeal. Is that the point of that?
In case there's any appeal, you know, the applicant might not like what we've done, and they can appeal it, or the public can appeal it. And then the clerk, after twenty days, certifies that there have been no appeals.
Okay, and what happens with that certification? Does she take some action there? Does she notify the building commissioner? Is that how that goes?
Well, we have a form. The first signature is yours. The next signature is that the town clerk has received it and will be holding it for twenty days in the appeal period. Then the final signature is that town clerk has held it, and there have been no appeals. And then it's all over.
That's it, okay.
But since the work is ongoing, you know, the work can just proceed, and then we'll just, we'll go with that. But I mean, if for some strange reason there is an appeal by some party, then that could cause the project to be held up pending all of that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Cindy, I think we're done with you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, John, do you have a copy of the the actual application? Is it electronic or hard or?
It's hard. The others are up at Town Hall in a folder.
Okay, is there any way you could scan that and send it to me? Because some of what I need for the decision form is contained on the application form.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'd say I'd have our land clerk do that, but I guess that would be me.
Well, wait a minute, don't we have one?
No, he didn't last a week.
Oh, my gosh. I didn't know that.
Nobody notified me, so I finally called because I was sending emails that were going on, you know, not, no response. And I finally called up Beth Wilson the other day from the Conservation Commission to say, so what's, how's your experience been with the land clerk? And she said, oh, I guess you didn't hear.
Jeez.
You know, here's the problem with that position. We've had some good people in it. The only one that really had staying power was Linda Ava Scott. She was a resident. She's invested in the town. She has another town job to go with it, so it was a decent overall salary.
Yeah.
But since we divided it off into a job that is really part-time and doesn't have much of a salary, you know, the talented people move on. They always do.
Of course they do.
You know, which brings me back to my Charlemont example. I worked for Charlemont recently as a consultant, and they have a person that's called Clerk to the Boards, something like that. And she does six boards.
Right.
Select Board, FinCom, ZBA, Concom, Board of Health, and Finance Committee. That's six boards. And you know, she's got plenty of work to keep her going, and so she's busy and she's paid well. And she's been around for a long time. But I think we've just created too small of a job here that we're not going to get anybody for very long.
No, I mentioned, I mentioned your that Charlemont job to Beth Wilson when I was talking to her, and she said, you know, why don't we do that? Apparently, we're looking for a clerk to the select board at this point too, so why don't we just look for one person?
Right. You know, I think maybe the town doesn't want to pay anybody over twenty hours a week.
Yeah, because of the benefits packages, yep.
Right, but you know, that consigns us to this forever.
Yeah, this isn't workable, anyway.
Do all the other boards have volunteer clerk? Is that what's going on?
The Board of Health has its own. It's internal, I believe. Cat does it, Catherine Hilton. Select Board has its own. I don't think FinCom has one. And then we've got one for the three land use boards. So right now, there are three people in Chutesbury doing this clerk work.
Beth said, oh, that's funny that you called me about this. Nathan called me just the other day and asked me the same question, so.
Well, I've been talking in his ear too, so.
Anyway, let's move on to Russ Greco on Wendell Road and talk about his proposed garage. So Russ reached out to me a couple of months ago and wondered about setbacks for an accessory, a small accessory structure on his property. And we've been back and forth on email. I've tried to keep you guys posted. Even the emails from Russ that came directly to me, I tried to forward them on to you so everybody would know what was going on. Russ, you want to tell us a little bit about what it is that you want to do and why?
Yeah, excuse me, my voice is, I've lost my voice and been sick the last couple of days. So I want to place a garage, a freestanding garage, at the end of my driveway on the entry side of my house. And I want to place it fifteen feet from the side lot line, which was the setback, the side setback, when I built my house and I sited my house. The regs would change two years after that. When I sited my house, I have a very small area to build on. It's only one point three two acres, the whole lot. And on the south side, there's a ravine and a hemlock forest that takes up most of the lot. So I had less than half, maybe a third of the lot to build on that was flat and was suitable for building. So I sited my house so that I could put a small garage up against the setback, and it wouldn't crowd the house. If I'm required to move that ten feet because of the twenty-five foot setback that now exists, it really changes the whole feel of the whole project. There are some minor issues. The major one for me is aesthetics because that house was designed and sited by me to create this little pocket of yard and garden. On the backside of the house, I reversed the salt box, so the two-story side of the salt box is facing west, and it creates and shields that backyard area from the road. So it's very quiet back there and very peaceful. Moving the garage over just ten feet, you'd have to actually, I can show you pictures when and if the time arrives that you need to see them. But you really need to come out and see it in person if you really want a good idea of what I'm talking about. It may not, I don't know what other people's impression of my issue is, but it's very personal to me. You know, I designed that site, built that house, and the feel of it is very important to me. And moving the garage over just ten feet creates a very small corridor in my mind. It's less than eighteen feet between the corner of the house, the northwest corner of the house, and the southeast corner of the garage. It just changes the whole feel of that area. There are other minor things that I listed in the report, or whatever you want to call it, that I gave to John that I hope he shared with you. There, I had planned on putting a, leaving, it's a one-car garage with a little bit of area for workspace and then attic space sufficient for some storage for stuff in New Orleans when we sell our house there. So the bay for the car would be on the left side. So moving the garage close to the property line, it's now not in line with the driveway, but it doesn't really matter. It's just a short bend into the garage. But we had planned on leaving one other parking space outside to the, in between the garage and the house. So we could pull up close to the front entry steps, which are not shown on my drawings on the site plan, which extend out from the north side of the house an extra eight feet, just enough room for a car to pull up right past the steps and offload people or packages, whatever. As we get older, you know, it's important that that parking space is on the south side of the garage, between the house and the garage, and not on the other side of the garage, which is where I'd have to put it if we moved the garage over ten feet to the south. That's the main issue for me. There, you know, there are some minor issues. There's some stuff with solar that are minor, but I mean, you know, they still exist because I'm using the garage as a vehicle for solar panels. I never wanted solar panels on the house for aesthetic reasons. I don't like solar arrays on the ground. So this was an opportunity for me because that south side of the roof on the garage would be almost due south. It would be an opportunity to put solar panels and then also install a power wall so we could have some backup, electric backup for the house. Because if we move back full-time, which we're planning on, to Chutesbury, it's an issue for us because we need to get away in the winter a little bit. Did you all read the thing I wrote?
Yeah.
Well, I don't need to go into all that, the minor stuff.
Right. So Russ, if you're finished, usually the board members start asking questions after the applicant presents. But we're not in a hearing anyway at this point. We have to we have to get, so this is covered in our zoning at four point two dash two B two. And it specifically says, non-habitable detached or attached accessory structures, which this is, which cannot meet the setback requirements of this subsection, blah, blah, blah. May be allowed by special permit from the ZBA, provided the board finds such structures to be in harmony with the residential development in zoning district, not detrimental to the neighborhood. This provision shall apply to both conforming and lawfully non-conforming lots. Your lot is lawfully non-conforming because it's below, I don't know what it has for frontage, but it's below the area.
Four hundred and ninety-eight feet.
All right, so it's got plenty of frontage, but it doesn't have a lot of area. So it's lawfully non-conforming, but this this means we don't have to get into our usual rigmarole that we do at the lake all the time about non-conforming lots because this section, we can apply it to non-conforming lots without going through all that. We've done any number of them over the years. It does require a special permit. And mostly that's so that all the neighbors are made aware of what you're doing and how you may be coming closer to their property than the bylaw otherwise requires. That's the purpose of the special permit. But we have to get a special permit application. We have to get the fee required. We have to hold a public hearing, which is notice to all the parties in interest around you. Get through the public hearing, and then we make a decision after that. There's no way around that process. So all these arguments, and I'll just say, anecdotally, we haven't been very strict about the word cannot, cannot meet. Often, the reasons are similar to the ones that you've outlined, you know, the aesthetics, the livability, where the existing structures are, what makes sense on the lot, things like that. We've taken those into account. And we've granted any number of these over the years. Biggest consideration that the board has is, what does your neighbor think?
Right.
Is there a neighbor?
Yeah, there is.
Property this morning.
I know them all. They're all fine.
Okay.
Especially the Maya Butter to the north, whose property line that is also. I've had Tyler over. I walked it through with him.
Yeah. So it does, I. From the aerial photo I looked at this morning, it doesn't look like there's a house near you. You may have a neighbor, but not a house.
Tyler Tyler and Wim are probably the closest. Things are spaced out fairly well in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
There's a couple of houses over in the, what, I don't know if it's called a subdivision or not, Ames Haven Road conglomeration, you know, where they're fairly close together by necessity, but.
Right.
So, if I may, hi, Russ. It's been a long time.
Hi, John.
The neighbor to your north, Tyler is how you.
Yeah, Tyler Shen.
Is there in fact a house on that?
Yes.
Lot, and how?
Yeah, it's on the other side. It's on the northern side.
On the northern side. So how far would you say roughly that house?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred feet from your prop, from the property.
Two hundred and fifty feet at least. He sided it over there, I think, to get solar gain.
Yeah.
Actually, that was one of the affordable housing projects in Chutesbury that they did. And originally, they were going to put it pretty much right on the property line. And I talked to him, I happen to know Paul Douglas, who ran the operation, you know, the Affordable House Company, and talked to him about it because you know, it was, it just was, didn't seem to me any reason why they needed to put it on the property line. So I convinced them to put it on the north side, which actually helped them because now they have solar panels on their roof, and they're able to get that advantage.
So if things were to work out where you could place this within the proximity of the boundary line that you'd like, it's really not close to their living space.
No, and there's woods. The woods is pretty thick there. I mean, it's thinned out. The underbrush is thinned out over the years, but it's still pretty thick. There's plenty of trees between his house and my house.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I do have a question. This isn't really, I I'm not bringing this up as I'm I'm trying not to be a nudge here. But it's really hard. I did a little research. So I have a question for you, and this is maybe for my education. Because I don't really know the answer to this, but I did go on the um assessor's map page. Because I was looking at lots in the Lake District and. You know, I fall just outside of the Lake District. But there are six lots that I count that border Wendell Road that are part of the Lake District. That are all larger. Size lots than mine who they have more frontage. And are under the regulations of the Lake District. They're on the same road as me, Wendell Road. I'm on the same side as them. And yet, and I can name the the, I have the list in front of me. But um, you know, one of them already has a house on them, two eighty, eight twenty-eight Wendell Road. And they're not, they're not subject to the same zoning regulations that I am, and I can't understand why they're included in the Lake District. I'm not trying to get them their privileges taken away. Um, and I realize it's not possible to get me put in the Lake District at this stage of the game. It would just. Delay my project, but I just had had to ask, how was it decided that those lots? Got to be part of the Lake District when I can't find any difference between them and mine. And the reason. For the difference in the zoning with the Lake District is because the house, the the lots are small and the houses are close together, which is not the case with these lots. They're all buildable because they're all described as developable on the assessors page. They're assessed at a value that would indicate that they are built, considered building lots. And as I said, one of them even has a house on it. They all have more frontage and more acreage than mine. So what's the rationale for? Putting them in the Lake District and me not?
Jeff, you remember how that line got drawn?
I know, I drew it. The the um. The two hardest districts to to draw back in two thousand and six or seven or eight when we did it. Were the Lake Wyola District and the Town Center District. I mean, where do they begin? Where do they end? What 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 do the polygons look like for those districts? And uh, I think the lake was harder. To to figure out. But anyway, it 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 roughly. Covers many tiers of housing back from from the lake. And one thing you have to do when you're designing zoning districts is. You you. You you have to have known boundaries, um, you know, whether it's a stream or a road. Or a a power line or a water body, something like that. Because otherwise your map is subject to just. Endless interpretation. It has to be exact. The thing has to end somewhere and roads are often where they do. So Lake District very hard to to draw, but everything in it is subject to those regulations and and nothing's that far from the lake. You know, there's different areas around that lake. There's larger lots in in the uh the eastern part of the district and there's smaller lots in the western part of that district. That's just, that's just the way it is, but the the lake is in the middle of it all and um so anyway, that was all done. Sixteen years ago with difficulty, but.
I can't see what the difference between the privileges that and or if you want to consider it a privilege. Some people might not. Having the shorter setbacks, what the differences between their lots and mine are. I mean, I don't. It it doesn't seem like it's an equal playing field here.
Yeah, well, the the setbacks work well for the majority, the the. Overwhelming majority of of the lots in that district. Those setbacks work work well for you. You you're probably noticing the side yard setback difference. Fifteen feet versus twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's um. You know, that that. Those lots you're talking about may be more in character with 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 your place. But that's the way the mapping ended up and it's it's never perfect. There's always some fuzzy wiggle room around the edges of those districts.
And it could not in any way be considered a precedent to. To give me in order to bypass a special permit? I doubt you know the answer to that, but.
No.
But this is what makes the special permitting important.
Special.
That that well, that it is, that it provides opportunities for situations that need to have other considerations, given how they're zoned.
Well, whatever. Couldn't restrain myself from bringing that up, no.
So it sounds like there's a path for you, Russ. Um, you can apply for a special permit and. From what Jeff said, this this is something that's happened before, so um I think that's that's probably what you want to do.
Okay, so my next step is to get an application from the town?
Yep.
And so normally Carrie would would help you with that, Carrie and and the town clerk, because you're going to need. The application to fill out. You're gonna, I can't remember what the fee was. You have to include a check for that.
I think it's up to six hundred dollars. Am I, am I wrong?
I thought there was some kind of sliding scale on that. We we had increased it for certain types of projects. You know, the larger solar projects that take extensive review. I think we have a higher fee for those now. But I I don't know what the fees are anymore. But there's also um, the the there's also the certified list of a Butters.
Right.
And 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 I can't remember. Whether the clerk sends out those those notices or the applicant does. We've had a clerk doing this stuff for so long. I I just have, I haven't had to do it, so I don't know all the details.
Seemed to me it would be the town's responsibility to do that. I mean, I. But I don't know.
So so John, there's absolutely nobody at town hall to, I I mean, can we still get in touch with Carrie?
I've not heard anything from Carrie and none of the things, none of the emails that I've sent to the ZBA. You know, email um have been answered by anybody.
It's a problem.
Okay. Well, um.
I mean, I can um arrange to meet you up there, Russ. I I know where that stuff is in town hall and and get you the application. And there's a, I believe there's a second page that says, you know, what sort of documents get included with that. That application page.
Okay, I appreciate it. That'd be nice of you.
You want to wait a couple of days till you feel a little better?
Yeah, we can do it next week if you've got.
Catch catch up with me next week and we'll we'll uh make a time.
I I have, well, just this morning I sent you the site plan review checklist. There's also a special permit checklist.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So who's. That will, there's twenty steps, Russ. Many of which we have to take, um, some of the town clerk has to take, some you have to take. And I think I think there's five parties involved, but. John should ship you the checklist so that you know what it is and how to go through that process, but I believe on the checklist. It also enumerates who's responsible for everything.
Right, yep.
So so I. You know, that's what Carrie went off of, that checklist. So if you just use that, I think you'll you'll know what she knows.
All right.
Sounds good.
I'll give you a call, John.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Yeah, hope you feel better, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Shall we um? We had a what else on their our agenda items not. Not known about beforehand. Um, I attended the um. State webinar the other day on. You know, the um changes to around accessory apartments primarily this, so they had an attorney and. A bunch of pretty knowledgeable planners on there who who pitched a presentation and then they answered questions from. The audience. There were two hundred and I'm gonna say twenty people on that call.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna do it in September. They they.
Yeah, I was gonna say that they're gonna do it again, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was very well attended and I recognized a lot of the names in the crowd from um. From that listserv that that, you know, I follow, so. That was interesting to and sometimes you could even put a face with, oh, yeah, so, yeah, that's 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 what they look like, huh?
So so you're on the mass planters listserv?
I have been for years, you know, and then I got off because when they closed my town account, um. You know, all of those subscriptions went away, so I recently got back on it because I wanted to, uh, you know, there's some useful information in there. And I actually. Um, went on there and asked a question about setbacks and setbacks coming forward with with properties, you know. With regard to this thing on Wendell Road and, you know. Planners from across the state said, uh, no. And I talked to Donna McNichol about it too, and she also said no. So I've felt like I was on solid. Footing there saying, you know what? I think you need to get a special permit. Let's talk about it at a meeting.
So, yeah, um. One resource that um that I find indispensable is um. The um, the the guide to Massachusetts land use.
Yep.
Which is only available. Only available. If you're an APA member, American Planning Association Mass Chapter. And if you're a member, you can you can access it off of their website. There are no printed versions of it.
Oh, my word.
It's it's like four hundred and sixty pages. It's got hyperlinks all over the place. You can you can go to cases. You can. Look up all this stuff. It's it's marvelous. Um, it was written by Bob Mitchell.
Yeah, I know Bob.
Former planning director of Amherst and um Bob Ritchie.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, from the Attorney General's Office and the old Peach Orchard's lawyer for a long time. You know, they're like preeminent authorities and so whenever I have a question, I go to that. You know, it's getting a tiny bit dated. I think it came out, I think it was finished in twenty-one or twenty-two. There've been no revisions to it, you know, certainly this stuff that just passed in the housing bond bill needs to go in there. Not sure who's gonna do that, but still, I mean, it's. Ninety-eight percent dead on.
Yeah.
And and it's designed for boards, ZBAs, building inspectors and planning boards.
It was interesting, some of the questions that were posed on on that webinar, you know, were um. Really billing inspector questions or Board of Health questions that. I was surprised that a lot of these planners had no clue about and, you know, I mean, just walk across the hall and ask them. They know the answer.
So anyway.
You're a member of APA?
I I I I use it a lot.
What's the membership to that, Jeff?
I think it's thirty-five bucks.
Oh, that's all? Okay.
Who else gets that? Michael DiChiara, I think, gets that.
Yeah, I think the town should pay for somebody from the ZBA to have a membership. That's that's a good uh, that's a good investment of town money right there.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought I might be able to use the hour of that um. Webinar as a continuing ad credit for my uh building inspector's license, because. I think building inspectors need to know about that, don't they? There there were some on the call.
Oh, yeah. Definitely. Alright, alright, so I'm I'm just trying to summarize what we're talking about here. Discussed um. New state legislation. Bond bill. Yeah, guidebook.
Can you bring up something new to this particular conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, well, actually, it's it's going, it's going back to the whole uh lack of a uh land use clerk right now. Uh, that that's gonna be a thorn, uh, I think that for. Well, for whoever's taking the responsibility for doing those duties. And I and I and I hear the conversation about, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could kind of do a combination thing where the town could benefit from several boards having access. To someone like that, even even boards that currently have someone who's kind of filling the role as a volunteer on the board, you know, might. Might jump at it uh if they had that kind of a service and I I just wonder what kind of uh wheels. Might be turned to have that be more than just. This item that just kind of, well, wouldn't it be nice? And then it doesn't go any further than that. What what kind of strings do you have to pull to really get something like that? Seriously considered uh in the right halls.
Who's our, who's who's on the uh HR board in town? It seems like that's something they should take up.
What what the town should probably do is add up what we are paying for the three clerks that we now have. That serve Board of Health, Select, ZBA, Planning and Concom. And see how that would compare with having. Well, none of those positions have benefits, I don't think. That's the problem. Benefits and um. You know, retirement type stuff, health. So. I don't know, uh uh some kind of fiscal comparison. And then a an aggravation and efficiency comparison as well. Compared to what's going on now.
Well, I mean, I don't know how some of these boards. You know, how are you gonna staff them? I I I would not have signed up to be the clerk and. The chair of CPA, you know, I mean, this. Work here. I'm up at town hall, you know, two, three times a week now and um. I'm I'm retired.
That's partly why I'm advocating for this, John. It's that's that's not what you signed up for.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, well, the 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 Board of Health has Catherine Hilton, who the la, as I recall. Well, is now the chair, I think, but also the the paid.
Oh, I see. They they paid that, yeah.
It was queried as a conflict of interest, which they said is is now it's it's gonna be okay. I remember that discussion a little while back.
Yep.
But um, but the but you're saying that the, does Concom have the person that does their clerking? Is that person paid also?
Well, that's the same.
Okay, 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 okay.
So you know, when I was on the planning board. I clerked that board for. Seven years, I think. And then when I was on the ZBA. I clerked that board for five years or more. And at that point, I said, you know, we gotta get somebody to do this. This, that's that's how Linda Ava Scott. Sort of came into being. She was doing one other board and I said, look at, she already knows how to do this. Why don't we just have her? And and um she expanded her role to serve a few more boards, you know, and that was great, because. And well, as you know, Jeff, it's 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 impossible to be part of a meeting where you're deciding something and also. Trying to keep the minutes, you know?
Yep. Well, I I will tell you that strange as it might seem, I I queried the the Charlemont clerk to the boards. Who does six.
Six boards.
And. Works part-time, under twenty hours a week.
Wow.
I was amazed at that. I thought I thought she worked more than that, but. The town is trying to get her. Um, the town is trying to get her up closer to twenty, but I think she's like fifteen to eighteen a week. Is what it told me. Um, Charlemont is, is sleepier town than shoots berry, but. Um. Still, that's pretty efficient, that. You know, they have, they have a good deal in that person.
We have a lot of Concom business here in town, because um, because of the lake primarily, so.
Hmm, hmm. Well, we get a lot of our. Raisin.
Also, like the ZBA stuff.
Because of the lake too.
Yeah. You know.
Alright, so um.
Okay.
W- w- we haven't vote, we've discussed a lot of this stuff. I'm putting it in the minute that we discussed it, but we haven't really voted on anything. Um. Except to approve the site plan review applications, so, or the, yeah, so. Alright, that was the only vote we took today, so I.
That's right, yep.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and, and, and isn't there another set of minutes out there? I, I recall doing another set of minutes before I, and I shipped them off to you, John, so maybe at our next meeting, we could review those and approve them.
Sounds good. Alright, if there's nothing else, I will close the meeting at eleven fifty eight.
Uh, let's see, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Excellent. All in favor? Aye.
Lacy, aye.
Air stuck, aye.
And that's at eleven fifty eight, oh, fifty nine now, okay.
Thanks, guys.
Always a pleasure, gentlemen.
Great to see you guys.
Okay, you too, Jeff.
You guys are, are. I don't miss shoots very much, but I miss shoots very people, so.
Well, the town is the people, right?
It's the people.
Yeah, we, I, I, many conversations come up. Surrounding, oh, wouldn't it be nice if Lacy was around for this and that or whatever, so. Yeah, you're, you're, you're remembered as well, Jeff, so get, get your butt back here whenever you can.
Well, there's a lot of other conversations that come up that say, aren't we glad he's gone?
I've not been privy.
Alright, take care, you guys.
Okay, guys.